Whether they are employed in a particular job, whether they are searching for jobs because they have successfully completed their schooling and their course of studies further, or whether they are still at school, we ask you to bless them. Bless each and every one. Allow us to continue to work in unity for the development of our community, for the betterment of our town, and for the success of our country. All this we ask for your name and for your sake through your son, Jesus Christ, our Lord. Amen. You may be seated. Thank you very much for coming to this town hall meeting. We in government, we have started a practice of moving around the country, meeting with the people. Because the Prime Minister believes that parreps must be in touch with the people. It is only when we are in touch with the people that we can learn from you what are your issues, what are your challenges, what are the various issues that confront you, both as a community and also individually, we must hear from you. Some of it we know already, and some of the things the government have in fact started working on. So for example, there is tremendous work going on around the country now in every constituency as far as infrastructural development is concerned. We have started a massive road rehabilitation project all over the country. So you will see a number of roads being rehabilitated. Of course, most of our major roads in Glenvillea have been done already, but we have started a program in the Portsmouth constituency where all of the major roads will be fully rehabilitated with sidewalks, drains, and will be resurfaced. We have started on Pembroke Street in Portsmouth, and it is two Glenvillea contractors doing the work right now. They're supposed to complete from the hospital going all the way down to the market and the fisheries to do all of the drains and sidewalks and then to resurface that road. And then they will move on to two other main roads in Portsmouth, which is the Centre Road Bedford Street and also Scott Street, which is from Ma Julian all the way down back to the One Mile Road, which is Grand Bay Street. I say that because one of the major roads to be rehabilitated with drains and sidewalks is the Middle Road of Glenvillea, starting at the top there opposite the Gis Park, going all the way down to the home of Smith Wenham, down to where Jackie Robinson has the garage. And all of that road passing in between the Seven Days Church and the former house of Divorce going down by Sandra. And we're going to do all of the drains and in places where we can give it a little sidewalk, we'll also do that, and completely resurface that Centre Road in Glenvillea. So that is one of the roads that we intend to do. Like I said, most of our secondary roads in Glenvillea and in Georgetown have been done. There's only probably one little piece just in between the back of the Customs House going up into Long House. That one will also be given some attention. At this point, let me just say good afternoon to my colleague, Honorable Catherine Daniel. Thank you for joining us, the Minister for Social Services and Gender Affairs. And of course, you have with me the... You can come to the head table, please. And we also have with me the Honorable Kelva Daru, who is the Parliamentary Representative for the St Joseph constituency, and he is also the Minister for Information Technology. So I want to say welcome to my colleagues. Like I said, those meetings give us the opportunity to meet communities, not even constituencies. We're doing it on a community basis. Because we feel that constituencies are large, and we do not want to mix up issues. Because the issues that may be germane to the Portsmouth Central residents or the Dodan residents may not be germane to Glenvillea Georgetown. So we do all of those meetings in our various constituencies on a community basis. So you can hear from us. It's an opportunity for us to report to you, but at the same time also for us, for you also, to share with us what are the issues confronting you so that we can address them in a timely and in an adequate manner. So like I was saying, so we're doing a massive infrastructural development project all around the country and the Portsmouth constituency, and more specifically Glenvillea will not be left out of that. We will rehabilitate the Main Road in Glenvillea. The Main Road meaning the road that runs, like I said, from Gis Park all the way back down to the Michael Douglas Boulevard. Of course, you know that we have started a washroom program because the government has a plan and a vision to eradicate, to get rid of, to eliminate all the use of all pit latrines in Dominica. We feel that in the 21st century, no one should suffer the indignity of a pit latrine or having to get up at 5 o'clock in the morning to go and throw their bache by the bay as we used to do in the past. Every single person will in fact... So we have done a number of washrooms in Glenvillea, and I want to assure and reassure those residents who have not yet... We have not yet addressed the eradication of your pit latrine. We will certainly get to you. So don't feel discouraged or despondent. We will in fact be addressing your situation. Because under the Housing Revolution of the government, there are about eight different components of the Housing Revolution. So any need that you have as far as housing is concerned, the government can meet that need. So one, when the Housing Revolution started, we actually started with the complete construction of homes. Of us, you know the house that Mr. Zai used to live in Glenvillea, right there opposite Obia Shop is one such example. The house of Angelo and his family is another such example. And there still are persons on that list. Some of you all who were at the market meeting when we had the Portsmouth Central version of that meeting heard the Prime Minister promise 20 homes. That number may in fact be more than 20, but it was start with the first 20 to continue the complete building of homes. And in fact, like I said, that number may have to be increased because right now the housing, complete housing list that I have is more than 20. But like I say, we'll get to each and every one of you. There are other components of the Housing Revolution. So for example, there are some persons who actually have their homes already, but because they had probably taken a loan, let's say when they were about 40 years or 45 years, they took their loans because they were working to build their homes. Right now, their children are of university age, and they have to take another mortgage to send their children to school. But that house would by now be about 25 or 30 years old, and that house would be in need of some renovation and some repair. But because of your age, you may not be able to go to the bank or the credit union because the bank or the credit union may tell you that you're too old to get a mortgage. And so that is where the government steps in. And so that is why we have been giving some assistance. We understand the situation that some people are in. For no fault of yours, you are aged right now, and you cannot work again because you have to retire, but your house is in need of repairs. And we have been helping some persons in that respect. I want to tell you that, yeah, you may have heard the talk going around that a lot of people have gotten assistance, and you may be asking where is yours? Don't worry about that. Don't feel that you have been left out. It's not that you have been left out. We cannot help everybody to the same extent at the same time. I have a housing list at home, just in my office in Portsmouth, and that is just for people that need materials for repairs. And that list is about $1.7 million right now. So I cannot go to the Prime Minister and ask for all of the $1.7 million to help everybody all at one time. So we'll do it in tranches. So when we get $200,000, like the Prime Minister has allocated, we have a ministry, a department in a ministry called constituency empowerment, where monies are made available. And also, one thing that we must remember is, remember the Prime Minister is the Prime Minister of the entire country, or he's the Minister of Finance, and he has 21 constituencies to service. Of course, 15 of them are Labour constituencies, but we cannot only put our eyes on the constituencies who voted for us because when election time comes, or if we in Portsmouth, if the person who runs against me lose their deposit, we beat JJ so bad, JJ get 50 votes or 10 votes. But the government doesn't obtain 11 seats to form the government, then that means that will put us back in opposition. And we in Portsmouth remember only too well. We spent 20 years in opposition, and we know the hardships of opposition. So we don't want to go back into opposition. So the Prime Minister has to be able to share the resources that he has to give equally so that certain constituencies don't feel that the Labour Party have not given them anything and as a result, when it comes to election, they do not vote for the Dominica Labour Party. So it's a very technical, politically technical situation that we must understand. We sometimes feel that development is not coming to our constituency as quickly as it should come or as quickly as we deserve. And quite rightly so, we have been voting the Dominica Labour Party for the last 70 years since Edward Oliver Libler, especially Glenvillea, the community of Glenvillea. Because there are only three communities, not even constituencies, three communities that has voted the Dominica Labour Party unbrokenly, if that is a word, really. They have not, they have never voted any other party since electoral politics began in Dominica. And that is Biosh in the Collio constituency, Glenvillea in the Portsmouth constituency, and Pennville in the Vickers constituency. So I want, I want to tell you, the people of Glenvillea, that don't feel for one minute that the government has forgotten your sacrifice and your support over the years. You will get what is duly yours and what is duly supposed to come to you, but it must be done in a technical way. It must be done in a way that would not allow other constituencies to feel that Labour Party is only concentrating on its strong constituencies, and then those other constituencies do not vote for Labour Party because we need 11 plus seats to be in government. And the worst, your worst day in government is better than your best day in opposition. Because when your party is in government, you can call the par rep and demand. In fact, there are some constituencies in Dominica where the person who lost this seat for the Dominica Labour Party is more important than the opposition par rep because people know and understand that if they go to the Labour Party person in that seat, the likelihood of their issues being dealt with is more than even the opposition parliamentary representative. So I've said all this to make you, to reassure you that the Labour Party have not forgotten about the people of Glenvillea or Portsmouth. We will continue to do everything to improve your lives, but we have to look at a global picture. We have to look at a national picture while we do it, and we have to be able to balance the politics to ensure that we satisfy as much people all over the country so that generally it will be seen that the lives of all Dominicans and all of Dominica has been improved by the Dominica Labour Party. I just wanted you to understand that. So we continue to touch your lives in every single important aspect of your life. For example, the unemployed. We have been able to address the unemployment situation in Dominica, where you have persons who for one reason or another, either they were not skilled, or they have just come from university or from college, and they do not have experience, so people don't want to hire them. Or you have businesses that want to hire, but they do not have enough money to increase their employees. The government through the National Employment Programme have been able to pay salaries to keep a number of persons employed in private sector and private sector jobs, and even in government jobs. Because we have persons who we send in the school to teach after lessons. We have persons cleaning up the communities. You see the NEP team going around, it's government paying their salaries. We put the monies in the council, and the council pay them. Places like all of the drains in the constituency in Glenvillea has to be cleaned, the park, the Gis Park. We have employed somebody full time to be able to cut the park and keep the park clean so that the young children after school can go in the park and play. I mean, every single aspect of employment has been addressed by this government through the National Employment Programme. And although some people want to make us believe that, "Oh, that's just for our time. The government just playing politics." Elections have been gone for three years now, and we continue to increase the number of people on the National Employment Programme. Because we believe that it is a necessary programme, we're not playing politics. So for example, we're here today to talk to you, and election is three years away. We don't feel the need. There is no need for us to play politics with the lives of the people. We're genuine. We want to come to you to listen to your concerns, to hear the things that affect you so that we can address them. And particularly as we are just about to finalize the budget, the national budget. We want to hear from you what it is we can do to make your lives better. What is it you require of us to ensure that you can continue to pay your mortgages at the bank? You can continue to send your children to school? You can continue to feed your families? You can continue to have a roof over your head? These are the things that concern us. And every single issue that we deal with, every single programme that we implement is geared towards helping you to better yourself. So for example, the fishermen. We have given the fishermen tremendous support through the small business programme. And you all know, I mean, just about two or three weeks ago, we had a very good small business meeting at the Portsmouth Credit Union Hall, where the small business people came down and they gave you different techniques in building a good business. How to keep good bookkeeping, how to do proper record keeping, how to do your sales, how to understand that when your business generates money, it's not for you to put into your pocket and go to Saint Martin and Lyme. It's for you to put back into your businesses. All those things we are teaching you because we want you to develop. Those persons we cannot employ directly or persons who are not interested in being employed under the NEP, but they have good business ideas. We are supporting those business ideas by giving you the money to invest in your business. We are investing in you. And that's why we tell people, we don't want it to be like a whip on your back where we have to come and veer you to see what you do with the money. Of course, our officers will go around and monitor your businesses, but it is you, it's your responsibility to ensure that you grow your business because when you are successful 10 years from now, when I am not in politics anymore, you will have your business, and your business will be able to feed you and to pay your bills. So take it seriously when we help you. You don't know for how long we may be able to have things like the small business development or the National Employment Programme. I mean, look at what Lennox Linton just did. Lennox Linton went right to America on the 1st of January New Year's Day, and he said that we have a program where his people can order passports online, and that is not so at all. And when you do those kind of things, and it damages the programme, and the programme shuts down, the government will not have the kind of revenue through the Citizenship by Investment Programme to be able to have all these programmes to benefit you, the people, not only of Dominica but more particularly of Glenvillea. So we must understand those issues, understand where the money comes from, and understand the attack that the opposition has on those programmes. Because if those programmes end, then we'll have to come up with something else to raise revenue. And that's why some people are saying, "Oh, we wasting the money. We not invest in the money properly." But those hotels that are being built right now in Portsmouth is monies from the Citizenship by Investment Programme that we are using to build those hotels. So the Moroccan Hotel that is being completed, the Kapinski Hotel in Bell Hall is being completed. And also, we have the Silver Beach Hotel to come in the area of where Coconut Beach used to be, where Caramat Coconut Beach. And all total, those hotels will amount to close to 500 rooms or more. 500 rooms. So every single business will be needed by those hotels. First of all, anybody who wants to work right now and learn a skill in construction, in plumbing, in electrician, in tiling, in painting, in carpentry, I mean, you can go and get a job there, right? I know a number of persons in Glenvillea who are fully employed on those projects. Not only will employment be available on those projects during construction, but after construction, there is an opportunity for people to get employment in those hotels. As cooks, as waitresses, as people in back room operation making the beds and cleaning the room after guests goes and comes, as chefs cooking in the kitchen, I mean, a number of jobs. Even other services, tour guides. I mean, we know we have some of the best tour guides and people in tourism in Portsmouth. Even here, I mean, we have been involved with Ross University for the last 30 years, and the guys who have been involved in yachting. So we are accustomed to the accommodation sector and the tourism sector. All we have to do is to just continue to sharpen our skill, to grow our business. Yesterday afternoon, I sat down speaking to a young lady who is interested in tablet and coconut cheese and other things such as these, peanuts, roasting peanuts and stuff. I mean, all of those little skills and little businesses that we used to have in the past. Nobody is doing that anymore. So for example, nobody in Glenvillea making ice pop again and frozen joys. Some of those young children don't even know it's frozen joys. Ice pop, you know, all of the popcorn, coconut cheese, and tablets. All of those things will be needed by the tourists who will come to those hotels. So we have to gear ourselves up for that. We have to be ready. I was talking to one person last week who started to do smoked chicken, and that is something that we don't see anymore. We've been, we gave that person some assistance to increase their production of smoked chicken so that when we have the increase of business right here in Portsmouth, we are ready and able to take advantage of those businesses. We have the abattoir that is up and running now. The abattoir can take all of the pork and all of the chicken that we can produce. Some people must think about going into chicken production and into pigery, pork production, so that we can supply the abattoir with chicken and pork. Dominica imports in the region of about $20 million worth of chicken parts every year. $20 million. Imagine if just 1% of that stays, or 10% of that money stays in Dominica. You can literally make a living on the production of chicken or pigs. Again, we have the pack houses, one in Roseau, but one more importantly, right here in Long House. And those guys have been bawling for produce. They crying for produce. Things like cucumber, easy thing like cucumber. Cucumber takes about what, three months max? Snow White is here. Snow White is an expert on cucumber production. And they are asking for like 10,000 pounds of cucumber almost every fortnight. And we cannot find that in Dominica because people are not producing enough. So some of us have to think seriously about going back into agriculture in a big way to produce little things like ginger, turmeric, kush kush, dashing. We have a dashing programme on right now where we have a contract for two 40-foot containers of dashing every month. One fortnight, one has to go to England, and the other fortnight, the other one going to Miami. And we don't have enough dashing to fill those containers. That is some, that is a business opportunity that is there, ready and available. And we have all of the lands around Portsmouth to be able to go into production of fresh agricultural produce. And that is an opportunity we have for us to generate some revenue, make some money for ourselves. That is another area. If we get together as a group, group of young farmers can get together, and the government is willing to give you all of the assistance that you need to start up. The government has put $10 million in the aid bank just for farming. Anybody can, anybody is able to go and access that. We have another contract in the pack house where there is a guy from Totola who comes to Dominica to buy fresh produce. And he's asking for something like about 12, between 6 and 12,000 pounds of fish every month, and we cannot get that. So that means that opportunity is there for more people to go into fishing and to be able to generate revenue for themselves. These are some of the programmes that the government has to empower you. And that is the purpose for those types of meetings, for us to be able to speak to you too. Because some people, they don't really listen to TV or they listen to news, but if we meet with you one on one, we can tell you about those programmes so that you can benefit from those programmes. Of course, you should know about the 70 and over non-pension grant because it's not everybody in their life that work for government, but everybody at some point or another have contributed to the development of the country. Either you had a truck driving people to Roseau, or you had a boat with a sen going and catch Kai and come back. Kai water is very nutritious, you know. Everybody looking now on Kai today and not eating Kai, but roast Kai is very nutritious for you. So you had fishermen in Glenvillea like Mr. Tolly and all of the other people who are right now too old to go and see, but they contributed to our development. That is what are making us strong today, the Kai water they used to catch. So the government has implemented a programme whereby people who don't have a pension and they don't have social security because they didn't contribute to social security, they can get a little $300 in their hand every month so that they can pay their little mapping, they can pay their little lights, they can have their water, that sort of thing. Government is giving you $300 every month so that you are able to live your life in comfort. And even those people who are bedridden right now. We have some old people who are sick, bedridden, and at home, and nobody to care for them. Either their children have abandoned them to go to the US or the, or England, or some of them don't have no children at all. But they are our brothers and sisters. They are Dominicans. And the government has a programme called the Yes We Care. In fact, Minister Catherine Daniel is the one responsible for that programme. And you will have, you will have a chance. You will have a chance. We will open the floor to questions in a little while. And so what we do is, there are a number of persons all over Dominica, but more particularly in Glenvillea here, that need assistance, that need help. We have, right there, if I stay here, I can see Mazar Belta at home, right there. And Mazar Belta is a great prayer warrior. That is a woman that has stayed close to God all her life. And so these people, we have to care for them. And so the Yes We Care have certain persons that they employ going around to make sure that our elderly and our housebound and bedridden people have, they have somebody to care for them in their old age. They have a bath, you comb their hair, you make a warm meal for them, and we take care of them. That is what we do under the Yes We Care. And if you know of any elderly person right now in Glenvillea that the Yes We Care does not touch, you have to let us know that. In the same way too, if you know of persons who are getting public support, something we call welfare. Some people are getting the welfare, and they do deserve it because they have... They have other means of supporting themselves, but they still continue to take the government like a welfare. And it are people that need it more than them. We must let the government know who these people are because it's not, it's not to say it's plenty money government have like that. But we just feel that we have a Christian duty to take care of the less fortunate in our community. And it's the only, I can stand there without any fear of contradiction to say that it is the first party in the history of Dominica who have so many programmes to take care of the less fortunate among us. And I want to give you the reassurance that as long as we are in government, those programmes will continue. Because this is not election gimmick. This is not politicking. This is a duty and a responsibility that we feel that we have because the good Lord said, "To he who much is given, much is expected." And that's why I will continue to do it. In education, I want to say that I will be meeting with all students in college and all students going to college from Freeform on Thursday, Thursday coming at 5:00 PM in the Portsmouth Credit Union Hall. I want to meet all students going to college now and all students who will be going to college in September. college in September so that any problem that you have, we will solve it from your transportation to your books, to your tuition, if you cannot afford to pay the college, we want to sit with you and work out because we believe that every single student who, who is able must go to the college. Right now in Dominica, there is no excuse, any young person for not studying because we have, we giving parents something called a school transfer grant, even let's go even further, let's go down a little lower, from preschool, we are supporting all of the preschools right now. Either we have NEP teachers in the preschool for those preschools that cannot afford, so the government paying the teachers, or we giving them a grant to buy their little toys, their little crayon, their little chalk, what they need in their preschools so that the burden of parents paying school fees in the preschool, we take that away. When they go to primary school, we are supporting with uniforms and the forms with the uniform forms, application forms will be available at the constituency office. So all of you all who have any problems getting your uniform, get it early. Parents have a bad habit, they like to come to the office in the last week in August when school ready to open. Why are you doing that? You have your book list now, you know what uniform, whether it's a white shirt for PSS or whether it's a brown skirt for St John's School or whether it's a blue, a blue pants or khaki pants for Roosevelt Douglas Primary. Come and take care of your children's needs early so that when school is ready to start, all of their uniforms and their books will be in place, ready to start school. Every single student wanting to go to the Dominica State College, we have a place for you at the Dominica State College. There is no excuse at all. Any student finishing Dominica State College now who wants to go to study, who want to pursue a degree, whether you want to stay home and do it online on the computer or you want to go to UE, the extra mural department in Roseau, or you want to go overseas to study, we are able to help you. Come and get the assistance that you need because the government has made it possible for us to give you educational assistance so that you can develop yourselves, so that you can come back to Dominica qualified as a professional, get a proper job and you are able to support your family and, and, and the rest of your household. That is what we want to do. We are empowering people at every single stage of the game. So once again, let me just, um, thank my colleagues for being here. Let me just allow Honorable Kelvadaro to share some more of what his ministry and the government has been able to do for you, the people of Dominica. So once again, the people of Glanvillea, sorry. Once again, I want to introduce my colleague, Honorable Kelvadaro.
Thank you very much, Honorable Ian Douglas, Member of Parliament for the Portsmouth constituency and the Minister of Trade and Employment. Let me also recognize the presence of Lady Catherine Daniel, Minister of Social Services and the Member of Parliament for the Colli constituency, also the Honorable Reginald Ostry who is here for us in the audience, the Minister of Housing and the Member of Parliament for the Cottage constituency. And of course, to all of you, the residents of Glanvillea gathered here this afternoon, let me say how happy I am to be here this afternoon, to be part of this town hall meeting. And I must say that your parliamentary representative, he spoke quite eloquently on a number of the issues which are affecting people and the solutions that the government also has to solve these problems as well as for the projects and plans that the government is also undertaking. What I will seek to do very briefly because your paribal has already said so much and the meeting this afternoon is ready to hear from you and to interact with you is just to highlight a few areas that I believe the Dominican Labour Party continues to place tremendous emphasis on. And the reality is, the Dominican Labour Party under the leadership of Prime Minister Skerritt continues to put people first. We continue to be a government for the people and that is why over the last several months, we have gone across the country embarking on a series of town hall meetings to hear from the people of Dominica, both the individual concerns, because those of you who have listened to the tunnels, you would have picked up that there have, there have been persons who have actually stood up and asked questions as it relates to their individual assistance. And we have also gone ahead and taken notes on a community level, a village level and by extension, the constituency level. And I must commend publicly all of the persons throughout the various parts of the country who in one way or the other has made a contribution at these town hall meetings because we take notes at these town hall meetings and we ensure that we follow up on the questions that have been raised at the various community level and also on the issues and the concerns that have been raised because that is what representation is about. When people have elected you to be a member of parliament, you have to be able to effectively represent your people, to speak on their behalf and to ensure that the needs of your people are met. And while it is true that we would not be able to address every need at the same time, but you will see that on a face-to-face basis, your Labour Party government is meeting the needs of the Dominican people and that is something that we will continue to do. You listen to your paribal and, and Ian, he, he has been here for a number of years in this constituency and he is someone that I look for, look, look, look up to in, in the party for the knowledge of labour and the history of labour because he has labour in his blood. And, and Portsmouth and, and he, he had mentioned specifically of Glanvillea, which this community has represented the Labour Party from the inception. And I must commend you for standing firmly with the Dominican Labour Party. And it is because of people like you that the Dominican Labour Party has been able to implement programs and policies that directly impact the ordinary citizen here in Glanvillea. The Washam Program, the Housing Revolution Program, the assistance that we give to students in education, the smaller business grants and the list can go on and on. All of these programs and initiatives that Dominican Labour Party has put in place is because we have been on the ground, listening to you, the residents of this country and ensuring that the programs that we implement, the policies that we implement will directly impact on improving your lives and improving the lives of your family. And I can tell you, my dear friends, that one of the priority areas for this Labour Party government has been education. And this Labour Party government has invested the most in education in this country than every government combined before this Labour Party government. We have invested significantly in education from the early childhood, the preschool, the young ones to tertiary university level. We have made a significant investment because we understand that for a country like ours to continue to develop, we must ensure that we educate our people. We must ensure that we provide our people with necessary skills that they would need to make a contribution towards nation building. And that is why with all of the development that is taking place and all of the tradesmen and the skilled men that are being employed now, we are now finding ourselves in a situation where we have a shortage of skilled labour on, in, in, in Dominica because we have so much work happening now in the country that all of the skilled men are now employed and we need more, we need more. And that is something positive because it shows that what we have now to do is to continue to train our people and that there are opportunities now for, there are serious employment opportunities now being undertaken here in the country. And so your government will not fail you. You have elected us for a purpose. You have elected us to ensure that we can continue to bring development to this country and we will continue to do so. Your paribal mentioned all of the other areas, the transportation grant, the school transfer grant, all of these other areas that have been looked at by this government in the area of education and we will continue to make that commitment to you. But my dear friends, all of these things that we are doing as a party, as a government would not happen if we had this unity in the Labour Party, if we had infighting in the Labour Party. And I can tell you that this Labour Party government, we are unified, we are together and we are following directives and the direction of our Prime Minister Roosevelt Skerritt. Because in the Prime Minister, we have a leader who is committed, who is compassionate and who understands, very importantly, who understands the needs of our people. But more importantly, he listens, he listens and that is what effective leadership is about, listening to the people, understanding their needs and ensuring at the end of the day, we can meet the needs of our people. And so moving forward, this Labour Party government will continue to work along with you. We have now in place, my dear friends, the budget period, we are now in the budget phase. And every year we go through this phase where we have to plan for the next financial year. And I can tell you a number of new initiatives that the Prime Minister will announce in the budget, again will be coming up because of the interactions that we've had with the ordinary citizens in this country. From the furthest point in the north to the furthest point in the south, this Labour Party government has been on the ground. And as we move into the budget period, it is important for us to understand that there is only so much that one government can do at a time. We have roads to fix, we have houses to do, we are building hotels, we have to ensure that children go to school, that there's medication at the hospital, that the farmers have fertilizer, we have to ensure that all of these things are, 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 are being met because running a country, my dear friends, is not an easy thing. It is not an easy task. And that is why we have to be very careful, very careful when we decide to elect leaders to represent us. Because anybody can come and tell you, oh, they will do this and they will do that. They can come and say anything, all kinds of promises. But when it comes to making the difference and getting the financing for all of the things is a completely different story. And that is what the Dominican Labour Party under Roosevelt Skerritt has been able to do. We have been able to tell you, the Dominican people, where we are going to get the money from, for what particular project and to implement that project. Just recently, we were able to sign a contract for the design of the national indoor sporting facility, a facility that will impact significantly on the lives of our young sportsmen and women in this country. And you heard the Prime Minister mention that he has already set aside forty million dollars for that particular project coming from the Citizens by Investment Fund. So this is not a pie in the sky dream. This is something that we have signed onto and the monies are already there for that particular project. And right here in the, in the constituency, in this constituency, in the new financial year, we will be also targeting two tennis facilities, tennis courts right in Portsmouth of international standard that will provide our young people the opportunity to play tennis and to upgrade their skills. And for your paribal, Honorable Douglas, you've seen the upgrades that has been made to Benjamin's Park, there was no lights at that park and now you have lights there at Benjamin's Park and you can see the transformation that has taken place. And I can tell you, Mister Minister Douglas, he speaks on your behalf because I sit next to him in parliament, in cabinet and he always says, "The streets, Rodney Street, we need to finish Rodney Street" and you've seen the transformation that has taken place in these areas, all because Honorable Douglas continues to represent you and represent you effectively. And you have to come and support your parliamentary representative because I can tell you, being a member of parliament is not an easy thing. It is not an easy task. Yes, you may believe at the time that your priority, your need is, 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 is a priority for you, but because your parliamentary representative goes throughout the entire constituency and he sees everyone in the constituency, he knows exactly the priorities. And I tell the same thing to my constituents, somebody may come to me because they made ten pieces of garnish for the house and to them it's a priority and yes, you can adopt the person, but there may be somebody in another part of the constituency who doesn't have a house at all and sleeping on the ground and for the paribal, he has to make a decision. And that is how we have to prioritize things, my dear friends. So yes, sometimes we may get vexed at us, we may curse us and so forth. Yes, we take our blows, we have to take our blows. But at the same time too, you have to also understand and you have to ensure, like your paribal say, Rome wasn't built in a day. So if your neighbor's house is not fixed, your turn is coming, my dear friends. And let me just say before I take my seat, and let me welcome Honorable Rosalind Paul. The Rasa government, we continue to remain committed to you, the people, and that is why, my dear friends, we are looking beyond. Because the Dominica that existed fifteen years ago is a completely different Dominica now because of the Dominican Labour Party. And you can see the transformation that has taken place even after we were set back by tropical storm Erika. We did not sit back and say, "Oh, Erika happened", we take, we taking our blows. No, we saw a true representation of leadership from the parliamentary representatives and the Prime Minister in ensuring that we can get this country back on its feet, my dear friends. And Labour Party continues to be a grassroots party. In spite of all of our achievements, our achievements, we remain a grassroots party, connected to the ordinary man and human on the streets, the fisher folks, the, the farmers, the lady who has a small shop in the community, all of these people because we all understand. And that is why the investments that we are making is to make the lives of our citizens better. The new national hospital now under construction, we promised this at the last, at the last election, before the last election and you can see it now being manifested here in Dominica, my dear friends. And we've made a commitment and every promise that this Labour Party makes, it may take some time, but we will keep our promises, my dear friends. So this afternoon is about you and hearing from you. So I want to thank you for attending this meeting and I pray that God continue to bless each and every one of you here in this community. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Honorable Kelvadaro. And when I hear people like Honorable Kelvadaro speak, I can retire now, you know, really. Labour Party really, I mean Kelvadaro is still a young man and he's still in his youth and he speaks, um, so eloquently and so positively. He's a great representation not only for St Joseph but all of Dominica and, you know, that is the kind of talent that Labour Party continues to invest in. And we have a lot of young people even here in Portsmouth that I have been telling time and time again, gear up yourselves, gear up yourself for leadership, even in the, in our Glanvillea community, we have some great persons, great young people doing great work. I see some of them here today, people like Richie and, and, you know, Mr. Wenham, all those young guys, what they continue to do. These are bright young guys, you know, quiet, unassuming, but if you see the quality of work that those guys, um, produce, I mean, they are top like any mapping or any of those people in, 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 in high places in Dominica. So we have great skill and great talent here. And, and Hendo, I, I want to, you know, reassure you that we will assist you guys. We will give you some assistance so that you can continue to grow and develop your businesses and there's so many great ideas that you guys have. Rest assured that I'm giving you a public commitment here today this afternoon that you will receive the assistance that you need to grow your business. And, and while I'm on that, and while I'm on that, I always remember them and respect them for the Georgetown Revolution. And I want to tell you this afternoon that the roads are being resurfaced right now in Georgetown as we speak, you know? And, and I have, I have sat down and I have thought about And I have sat down and I have thought about Georgetown, I've meditated on Georgetown, and, you know, in discussion with the Prime Minister. We have decided that in order to reach as much people as possible with the Georgetown lands, we have decided to do some apartment-type buildings in Georgetown, because we have maybe about seventy-five lots, and the Minister of Housing is here, correct me if I'm wrong, Honorable Ostry. We have about between sixty-five and seventy lots. So if we are to give only lots, and we have probably about between six hundred and a thousand applications for persons who want a house and land in Georgetown. So we have decided, Honorable Ostry, in discussion with the Prime Minister, have decided that we will do some apartment buildings like what we got help from the Chinese to do in Baff Estates and in Emzol, so that we can reach as much people as possible. Because we understand that there are a lot of, we understand, we know that there are a lot of persons in need of housing in the Glanvillea and in the Greater Portsmouth area. And so we will be doing that when we have finished doing the infrastructural development in the Georgetown area. So rest assured that your needs will be met as far as housing is concerned. And this is a good time and a good opportunity, as I am speaking, about your needs being met, because we do not only concentrate on infrastructural development. So for example, we have finished Rodney Street. You see Pembroke Street being done right now. When we finish Pembroke Street, we're going to do Bedford Street. Bedford is from Faith Enterprise, down by where Ticoot is building, the building right now, going all the way up to LD. When we do that, we're going to resurface Rollo Street from the Methodist Church going all the way back down to Gem Wade Shop. When we do that, we're going to do Scott Street, which is the one from by Mad Julian Mills, going all the way back to the Women's Cooperative Building. And for your purposes in Glanvillea, we're going to do the Centre Road. And we must name that Centre Road, you know? We must name that Centre Road. But we'll give it the name. It has a name? Chamber Street. Okay, so we are going to completely rehabilitate Chamber Street from Gis Park, going all the way back down to the Michael Douglas Boulevard, with drains and sidewalks and all of that sort of thing. So rest assured that while we continue to deal with your social needs, as far as meeting your needs individually is concerned, we continue to develop the community by developing our infrastructure, because if we do not develop our infrastructure, we really will not have the platform to be able to build our future development. So right about now, it is my pleasure to introduce to you the lady who has been responsible for all of the social programmes that the government has been piloting in Dominica. Great programmes like the Yes We Care and the Semtian Over, and all of those great social programmes have really been piloted from her ministry. The welfare help that we continue to give, the popper's allowance, like it is more popularly called. All of those great assistance from the government comes from her ministry. She's a lady with a good heart. She's not even a politician. I don't think she likes the politics. She likes to help people, but the former teacher in her has a bit strict, and when people seek to take advantage of the government, she's one of the persons who set them straight. I would now want to introduce to you my good friend, Honorable Catherine Daniel.
Let me say a pleasant good afternoon to everyone and to thank Honorable Ostry. Let me recognise among us Cabinet colleagues, your parliamentary representative, Honorable Ian Douglas, Minister of Trade and Employment, Honorable Kelva Daru, ICT Information Technology, Honorable Rosalind Paul, my sister in Cabinet, Commerce, Small Business Enterprise. And I recognise Honorable Ostry in a special way, Ambassador Nanton. Ladies and gentlemen, people from Glanvillea, I must in a special way recognise double O. And I'll tell you why. When the United Workers' Party people were having their meeting near the financial centre, and after that meeting, we saw the burning down of business, the breaking and entering into business. When we were in Parliament in May, we saw stones being placed to stone us. The work, I'm not saying the work of the Labour Party, but the United Workers' Party, but it was after the events that these things happened. And how I get to know double O, it was during an event of the Labour Party, where we were busy in the Botanic Gardens, working together as a family, trying to better the lives of people who use the Botanic Gardens. And the crew from Portsmouth, that was a formidable crew, who were carded. And that is what the Labour Party stands for. That is what the Labour Party is about under the leadership of our Honourable Prime Minister, Dr. Roosevelt Skerritt. Because it was on his initiative that this programme was put in place. And it's like a man, I don't know if God speaks to him at nights, and he comes off with these positive ideas and bet your bottom dollar that when he speaks it out and it's implemented, it's working. So thank God for Prime Minister. I am here to support my colleague, Honorable Douglas. As Honorable Daru said, he sits next to him. So Honorable Daru is on his right, and I'm on his left. That's how close we sit. And we have to give support to each other. One of the reasons of the town hall, I came in a bit later, I do not know if he said that to you, was that oftentimes we felt that people only heard from politicians when five years come by. And our leader said, no, we cannot operate that way. We have to meet the people, to hear them, to check our polls, to take our pressure, to see if we are working in their interests. And so was born this initiative of town hall meetings. Coming to the people, not they just coming to us, but we coming to them to hear from them. If you find we are doing bad, so that you can help us to pull up our socks, so that we can do very well for you, because we are here to serve you. And we do not want to lose sight of that. Our service is to the people, both those who elected us and those who didn't elect us. But we are here to serve, and so we are here in the town hall. I heard your Par Rep speak about the various programmes under my ministry. And I'll address just that component of the town hall this afternoon. You must understand, these are programmes initiated by the Dominican Labour Party government. This means that if the Dominican Labour Party government gets out of office, these programmes can be dead. It's not compulsory. So you, I think you need to understand that. And so under my ministry, some of the programmes which exist, one of the key programmes is the Yes We Care programme. Love for the elderly. Not all of the elderly are blessed with children who can take care of them. And some of us may have children, but just in name. Just in name. And so we need to help the most unfortunate among us. And this programme initiated in 2009, a brainchild again of our dear Honourable Prime Minister, who came up with the idea, going around, and he was raised in a community where, you know, people helped each other, or they still continue to do so. And he saw the need to expand, you know, to initiate this programme, to bring a life of dignity, a life of comfort, a life of pride to our unfortunate brothers and sisters. And as I said earlier, thus was born the Yes We Care programme. We operate this programme according to health districts, seven health districts. But we also have to look about that district business again, because some of the districts are so wide. And so we may be missing people who rarely need the care. It is not a babysitting programme, that you don't have time to take care of your mother, you live in the same house, and you don't have time, so you want somebody there. This programme is for people, as I said earlier, who do not have the children to take care of them. They may be living with somebody, though younger, but also an elderly, who cannot assist them. They may have children, but the children may not have the means. And so we come in to help. We don't just grab people and help them, we do an assessment of the situation. And sometimes we have to be careful with assessments that we do of people. Because you may go to an elderly home, you may see a TV, you may see a settee, and just think that the person is well off. But that may not be true at all. That in some houses, the TV is not even working. It's just like a decoration in the living room. Some of them, the TV is somebody who gave it to them. Somebody may not need a chair again, and they give it to them. Some of these elderly people are clean people. They keep their little house tidy. And that may be reflected as somebody who has, and this may not be the case. So we send people to assess them. And sometimes the assessment comes, and you see, not recommended for care. I just had the opportunity just about two weeks ago, when somebody wasn't recommended, and I know the person. And it's for that same reason, the TV. I decided to go to the home myself, to see for myself what's the situation, and to ask for another assessment for me to see what I would get. And this time a different officer went, and the outcome was different. Now, in cases like this, though we have supervisors, caregivers, but we want you, the people in the community, to look out for people who really need. And you may bring that to our attention, because that is what runs in the vein of the Labour Party people, Labour Party supporters. Care and love. And we should not lose sight of that. We need to maintain that, because this world is a crazy world. Very, very crazy. We see the abuse of the elderly now. So many things that are happening, we say it's end times. But we have to be each other's keeper and look out for the people in your area. And so we may miss people, but you may know. And so we would welcome from you recommendations, information about such people, so that we can touch the life of everyone who needs it. Another important aspect that the Labour Party government does is the seventy-plus. And I know a lot of people have a little confusion with that. It's called the non-contributory social security pension. And it was two hundred dollars before. And we know things are getting harder. So it has been increased from September last year to three hundred dollars. As your Par Rep said, some people worked, they never paid social security, they were working for themselves, they had their little farming. And now they reached that stage, they have nothing getting. And so this was born out of that concern for people of that nature. But oftentimes we have a little confusion, because we had people who were getting fifty dollars from social security. And then when it was two hundred, we would give them the difference, which was a hundred and fifty. Some people were getting a hundred and twenty-five from social security. We would make up the difference and give them seventy-five. Some people were getting one seventy-five, and then they would end up getting twenty-five dollars. Because what happens is that it's one system which work with the names of everyone. So when they put in your name, say you fill in the form, and though you think you were getting one twenty-five from social security, and you're supposed to get two hundred, no. When they put in your name into the system, the system would show how much you are already getting. And that is why, when it was increased to three hundred, a lot of people stopped getting the non-contributory social security pension from us. It's not that we threw your name out or we stopped it. But what happened, the government said, nobody receiving social security should get less than three hundred. So everybody was placed at the level of three hundred, so that those who were getting social security, no matter what amount, it was brought up to the three hundred. And only those who are receiving nothing would get the three hundred non-social security pension. And that is how it works. So if you know of anybody who said they used to get that, and the government stopped, that is not the case. That is because the threshold of the social security has been placed at three hundred, so everybody now is at three hundred. And in everything, give thanks. Because he would walk down the road, and nobody would look at you and tell you, look, three hundred dollars. No one. So we have to thank God. Because no other government has done that in the past, not even this Labour Party government. But its leadership is everything, and it's under this leadership, the leadership of our Prime Minister, that these things are happening. And so this is for the social. Now, welfare, which is different. Public assistance, as it is known. This public assistance, it takes in many different forms, assistance for many different situations. And people may have, you know, somebody who is sick, very sick, they cannot work. Too young to receive the three hundred dollars from social security. They're just in between that age. Again, we do an assessment, people apply for it, people may submit their names. And that is the work the village council should be doing. Identifying people, the town council for you. Identifying people in the community who really need that kind of help. They can buy a pound of sugar. They're too young to get the seventy-plus. And they have nothing, they have worked nowhere. So these are the people we trap in the welfare. We also trap people with children, a person may have a disabled child. And you know, well, special needs child, as it's called now, special needs child, who may need pampers, who may need twenty-four-seven attention. It may be a young mother. It may be a young mother. They cannot go to work because of that. And that is where the public assistant comes in. This is done in my ministry. And now I see a lot of young people, a lot of young people. But you don't have to look at age, what matters is the circumstance. What we do, when we read the write-up on the person, based on what it is, we may say, okay, we'll assist you for six months. See, if you get a job, we may try to place you under the NEP. Thank God for the NEP, so that you can make a little money. But if we have not placed you there, we as a Labour Party, we do not want to see anybody go hungry. We do not want to see anybody suffer. And so if somebody comes to you with that situation, what I want you to do is to say, if it will mean, what would I like for myself? And you always have to think that way when you need to help people. And so sometimes you may see young people getting because of their situation, but we give them a specific timeline to get their act together, and then we go and we reassess them. Coming into this ministry, what I found out, we've helped people with children. Coming into this ministry, what I found out, we've helped people with children, people who were not working, the children have left, they have grown up, they are working, they move out. And some of these people will not come back and say, I do not need it. And they are still getting it. But as we put the message out there, we want you to help us to be prudent in the things that we do, in the service that we give as a government. Because sometimes, we're there and we do not know. But people are doing that now. As we go through the town halls, many people have come forward and say, look at this lady. Her children were getting since they were that age, and the children are now working. So we are now, because we do not want people to remain permanently on that list. Because we want a better life for people. That is why we help with housing, with education, with medical. We help so that you can have a life of your own and a life of dignity. So we want you, as a community, if you have that situation in your community, to help us, to identify, so that we can use the money that we get wisely. Because it has to go around. It's not a burial, and we deep, and we take, and we give. It's not like that. We have to work hard, and as your pal Rep told you, a lot of the programs that we are doing is through CBI. And I must remind you again, these are programs. If this government goes, the programs might go. You heard the leader of the opposition, these greedy people. That's how we characterize people, by their sweat off their brow, they shall eat bread. Can you imagine an 80-year-old person going to find a job to be a messenger or cleaner, to find, to get money to survive? So you can tell the intention of these people when they come in. And so, ladies and gentlemen, I thank you, Gran Villar, like a community of mine, Biosh. You have been supportive of the government, that's the best government ever. You were there in hard times and bad times. I remember somebody from Biosh who always gives me a joke, when Ian's dad was the leader, and they started a motorcade from Portsmouth, going up to Roseau. That's the time they used to call Labor Party all kinds of meme, Labor Power, that thing. And he said, you know what happened to us? When we reached Maho, the motorcade melt. Nobody was there with Mike, everybody disappeared. But these people have remained. Gran Villar, I thank you. And Biosh, Biosh, I thank you also. Because you know what it is. You are, you will never get a government. Listen to the other side, listen to their programs. Have you ever heard them enunciate what they're going to do for people? All they tell you, Scare it must go, that party must come out. Not once, you will hear them say, we want to come to make life better for the people. Not once. So when people talk to you, what they are not saying sometimes is more than what they're saying in their thing. So you have to listen. Not everything you see on Facebook is true. Not everything you see on the internet is true, because people write those things. Talk to people, find out yourself, educate yourself, ask questions. And so, this brings us to the point of education. Ladies and gentlemen, the thing that will open any door for you is the key to education. I would admonish you, some of you have children who will be starting secondary school. Be supportive of them. Because when they have that, when they have the education, that is why we invest so much in education, they will become independent citizens. And that is what we want for our citizens, that is what we want for our young children. This world is a competitive world. Very soon, these little children here, to get a first job, to enter, maybe to be a messenger, they will need to have a first degree. So education is the key. Do not blame your children, be supportive of your children, take interest in your children, do not go and fight with teachers. If your child come and tell you something, because that child spends more time at school sometimes than with you. So I am actually begging you to love your children, to ensure that their education is taken advantage of. Because this Labor Party, remember the pronouncement of the Prime Minister also, there will be a graduate in every household. And we are seeing more than one graduate in many households now. The opportunities are there. It's just to get the prerequisite, the baseline, the basics, and this government will ensure that your child or you, whoever want to obtain a skill, whoever want to get an education, that this will become a reality for you. I thank you for having me, and have a blessed weekend.
Thank you very much, Honorable Catherine Daniel. Very comprehensive, and that is the kind of intellect that we have in the Dominica Labor Party. When Honorable Dr. Roosevelt Scarey chooses candidates, he chooses not only people who have a connection on the ground, but people who are well-qualified and able to perform the duties of ministers of government. And that is the quality of the government that you have with you. And one of the things that she mentioned, you know, is the amount of support that is available across the board right now. Most of it comes from her ministry. But just imagine, even in Portsmouth here, you can come to the Pal Rep's office in Portsmouth to get assistance. You can go to the Portsmouth Town Council, they have a help desk that they just opened. And the Prime Minister has even taken, taken it even further and implemented an aspect of the public support program. The thing that is more popularly called the Red Clinic. Right now, we have an office where you can go with your issues, the big three-story green building opposite Rudolph Thomas, in the corner of the road, what's the road called again, Eggman Street. You can go to that building there, there's a secretary there, who will receive you and take your issues directly to the Prime Minister, and the support that you require will be given. That is the kind of systems that we have in place to take care of your needs. We're not like the opposition party, or like Lennox Linton. Right now, the secret is out. Sam Raphael told you that he was right there. When they gave our passports, our quid pro quo, they didn't even get, they, they, they didn't even win the election yet, but they were quid pro quo passports. They got $6 million in the hope that when they win the election, they will give the men the passports to sell. They, they stole the passports quid pro quo, and now they do win the election now. And they're coming up with all kind of issues, because they have the money to pay back. It's like when you go and borrow money from a drug dealer, and you spend the man money, you do have the money, and he coming for you and your children now, you run in and hide. That is United Workers Party now. They catch them now, and they declare with them, Sam Raphael. And see how, see how they're so wicked. Sam Raphael said that Lennox Linton, after Tropical Storm Erica, when the landslide took Jungle Bay and washed Jungle Bay away. Although Sam wasn't supporting government, everybody knew Sam run election in Piddit Savan against the government. But the Prime Minister is so magnanimous, Roosevelt Scarey is so nice. He went to Sam, you know, he go to the man, you know. And as the man boss, we understand your pain, you understand what you're going through. You lose everything, a great investment, what can we do to help? Lennox Linton pulling the man shirt, and telling the man, don't rebuild the hotel. Don't worry about how much people you have employed there, how much people earning a living there, how much farmers selling their crops there to make a living for themselves, how much fishermen selling their fish there. United Workers Party telling Sam Raphael, don't build no hotel under Labor Party, as if it's Roosevelt Scarey to spite him when you tell the man, do invest in Dominica. That is the kind of leadership that we want in our country, brothers and sisters? No, 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 we cannot allow that. And that is why we have to remain firm with the Dominica Labor Party. We have to remain solid, because that is where our future is secure, and our children's future is secure. And that is why we had our small business meeting in Portsmouth about two weeks ago. The credit union was too small for the amount of people who were interested. And I can tell the minister, minister, every single person that came there have a business running in Portsmouth, or they have a good idea for a business. They have nobody there that was playing around. Everybody I saw there, and everybody who have spoken to me since, are people who have great ideas. And we thank you for the support that you have given to us so far. And I want to reassure the persons who have not gotten their support yet. Though, don't be disappointed, don't feel afraid, in time, we will reach everybody. The amount of requests that I have on my desk right now, amounts to about $1.7 million. That is $1,700,000. The Prime Minister has already pledged $1 million. We have already, between last week and two weeks ago since the meeting, we have already handed out half of that million in assistance, $500,000. We have an extra $500,000 on the table. And I don't want to tell you that I intend to go and beg for some more, but I don't want to see that in the meeting. But I want to go and beg for some more money. So rest assured, rest assured, that we'll be all right. We'll be all right. Okay, we will help you, just take your time. And so, right about now is my pleasure. And, and you see, you see how, you see how we are respected in the Cabinet of Ministers. Today, we have three ministers at the head table. And then we have another senior minister, who is our neighbor and our friend, the most powerful man in Dominica, right now, Reginald Ostry. The Fred Reggie, you know, the Fred Reggie. That is why they were saying all kind of things about Reggie when Reggie was sick in Guadalupe. You say all those people malicious, as if sickness come for one set. But God has blessed Reggie, he come back stronger than when he go, stronger. I was listening to Reggie, I tried to call the radio to make a little contribution last night. And Reggie have them jamming them there, and we have to give people their flowers while they alive. Reggie is a pillar, Reggie stand up, stand up Reggie, stand up. Stand up and take a bow in Gran Villar. Yes, Reggie, we all, we love you, we appreciate you, and we want to give you your flowers while you alive. And then we have Ambassador Nanton, who is always here with us. Man who was there laboring in the vineyard, always there with Rosie, and he continues to be there with Scarey. Manu is the one, right now, Manu is in charge of the Citizenship by Investment Office. Manu is the one going around all over the world, meeting people who want to invest in Dominica. And that is what Lennox Linton went all the way to America and telling the world, don't come and invest in our program. So when he say that, we will lose the yes we care. We will lose the, 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 um, people NEP, people no work for the NEP. All the little housing and the washroom facility, we wouldn't have that again. All of the social program, all the scholarships and the school books and things we giving, if we lose the citizenship by investment money, we wouldn't have that. And all of those other countries have it, you know? Antigua have it, Senkita have it, St. Lucia started, Guinea have it, England have it, America have a program, Canada have a program, Gibraltar have a program, Bahamas have a program, you know? When they making people believe it's Dominica who not have citizenship by, it's only that, our program is the best program in the Caribbean, and people want to come to Dominica. That is what it is. Because they seen that government is serious, and we set up the program where the program is transparent, no crookedness, people know where their money is being invested. We investigate the people before they come, and not we that doing the investigation, you know? International agencies around the world investigating the people and sending the report to Manu and them in the office. And if any red flag shows up, the people are denied citizenship. So everybody jealous of the Dominica program right now. And it was Edison James who introduced the program to Denzel Douglas, who was the Prime Minister of Senkita at the time. And now, they trying to tell us that we should scrap our program, because they not in office. May, may, if your father leave a house for you and your brothers and sisters, because they leave the downstairs for you, and your brothers and sisters upstairs, you so vexed, you want to burn down the house? So when you burn down the house, where you going and live? What your children going to inherit? All of us will be outside in the rain catching cold. And that is what Lennox Linton and United Workers Party want to do. They want to put Dominica in a state where people lose confidence in this government. They vote us out of office, and when they come to power, they will not know how to be able to implement all of what this government has done to benefit the people of Dominica. And so, at this juncture, it is my pleasure to introduce to the microphone the Honorable Rosalind Paul. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon to all of you. It is a privilege to be here, I'm always happy to be in my neighborhood. Yes, let me recognize your own parliamentary representative, Honorable Ian Douglas, Honorable Kelva Daru, my sister here, Lady Danielle, and our senior, Honorable Senior Minister, Honorable Reggie Ostry. I also see Manu, Mr. Tulo, okay, in the halls, and all of you beautiful people. And while Lady was talking about the activity in the gardens, we must see, we must single out people like Marsha, look at sitting here. Marsha, I never know a woman could work so hard. Put your hands together for Marsha. When we were doing the roads in garden, Marsha was there, tete a tete with every man until the end. You know, she really showed, made us proud as women. My dear people, this is a government that continues to work for you, for our people in every sector. And I am sure, all of you, or none of you sitting here, can ever say in discussion with any opponent that the opposition has ever said that this government is not working. In all of the articulations, you'll hear they say, Scare it must go, this is corrupted. But there is one thing that you never hear them say, is that this government is not working. In every discussion you have with them, they'll say, the government is working, but... But they cannot say this government is not working. This government has targeted every situation that affects people in every sector. Every sector that you think of, this government has transformed it and has sought to develop it to benefit people. You speak agriculture, government has made a difference, we have a legacy. And right now, we have the parkhouses right there in Long House that can capture, that can take in all your produce. And taking in all your produce to target or to meet the emerging markets. Right now, there are markets, and your pal Rep baby will expand. But as far as I know, there are increasing markets for Dominica local produce. Yams, dashin', ginger, you name it, we have markets for it. And the parkhouse built under this government is facilitating us to meet the necessary standards and to reach these markets. You think of education, this is the government that has invested the most in education. The most, we built the Dominica State College, so that every child who meets the requirement can enter the Dominica State College, can reach tertiary level. We invest from preschool, early childhood, right up to university to ensure that we build the human resource. And before, not many of the poor man's, poor family person would get into university. It was only the chosen few. But this government has made such an impact that every child, whether you come from a low-income family, a high-income family, you can access tertiary education. And you speak health, this is the government that has ensured that our senior, without any fear, can go to access free healthcare at the Princess Margaret Hospital. And those below 16 can... And those below sixteen can access healthcare at the Princess Margaret Hospital. And further, this last year, this is the government that has introduced a pilot program um, for national health insurance. So everywhere, every turn you make within any sector, this government has transformed lives. This government have improved lives, have improved the situation. And my sister spoke at length at the various social programs that targets the poor people, the very core of people's lives to ensure we have improved quality of life. And through the small business development, we are touching lives and ensuring we have sustainable livelihoods for people around the country. So far, I am sure every community has been touched in terms of small business development. And I dare say, those of the communities, we have, we have, um, we have sort of changed or added to the approach at the Ministry of Commerce. And through the directives of the Prime Minister, we have decentralized the funds. And so, we have lump sums and being transmitted or disbursed through the village councils and monitored by the Ministry of Commerce. So your Pal Rep here has just spoken to you and said that over half a million dollars have been disbursed and has benefited people from your community. And those listening, um, to us here, the communities who have not received, your turn will come. Some of you, it is in process and it will come. We also continue to give small grants at the Ministry of Commerce. Um, so individuals apply and they too can access small grants in addition to the decentralized funds. We decentralize this fund so that it meets more people where they are. But it is not just giving people money. That is not the idea. We not just giving people money. The money is meant to help those who have existing businesses to expand on their businesses. Many people have shops and this is the only means of survival. They have a store, this is the only means of survival. And sometimes all they need is a little boost to really make it. Other people have, um, some fresh ideas, young people in particular. And many of you would have been unable to face a bank. Some of, some of these people would never been able to go to a bank to get a loan because you do not have the necessary collateral. You do not meet the necessary requirement. And in particular, many of our young people. So many young people have been able to come to the ministry with a business idea, applied for support and get this support. And there are many success stories where these young people have invested the money, implemented the project, even employ others to work with them and even come back to expand on their services. So far, I know of about four young people who started off with us and they are now engaged fully and have even employed and expanded their businesses on the north of this country. And, um, you know, recently I went to a funeral in another community and a young man, he started blowing, blowing his horn. I wondered what he was saying. Anyway, I stopped and refused. And he just wanted to say thank you and to say, Ms. Paul, we did the training. We get the grant and now we've been called to do a big project in stone. I think they did an apprenticeship with, um, Honorable Ian Douglas, um, Ministry in Stonework. And they came to us, we provided them with the grant. They participated in our training. And now they are doing the stonework, going to do the stonework for a big hotel development. That is what this government is about. It is about empowering people. Empowering people to be able to help themselves and even help others. And, um, as Mr. Douglas said, we don't just give grants, but we do the necessary training to help these people, to help, um, you the small business people. And last month, we had the training in Portsmouth and over a hundred people participated in this training to help them, to help these people to manage their business better, to manage their resources better, to succeed in businesses. And there were existing businesses, but there were also a number of new businesses. And, um, at the end of one of the training, a young man approached me. You know, we have people, young people with very good ideas. And the young man approached me and when he spoke to me, I said, come and see me tomorrow. I'll be in, um, in Peibush. And right away, I sent him to talk to my peers because we have been trying to, we will be training people in e-commerce. But this young man was ahead of us. He already has a platform where we can work with him to get some of our people to sell online through his platform, e-commerce. And that is his business. So we are also involved in encouraging people in business, um, not only training them, but encouraging innovation. And hopefully, in the new year, um, new budget year, the Ministry of Science, Technology and Technology, there is, um, the Centre of Excellence at the State College. And we will bridge the gap. We'll be working with him to see how these people with innovative ideas can transfer that to becoming new businesses. So this is what, um, our ministry is about. We also have, um, what we call Business Rural Base Development Centers, where we work with groups or individuals, um, to be incubated. We work with them for a year, handholding, training, um, helping them to manage their business, training them hands-on until they can emerge into new businesses. So we have a number of such initiatives around the island. And one of the things too that we have in Portsmouth, as Mr. Douglas mentioned, coming from a lead project that was done, there is now a help desk for business at the town council. The Ministry of Commerce intends to help, um, to strengthen that, um, desk to be able to have a more structured approach of mentorship, handholding, business advisory, business counseling, monitoring. So that you the businesses in Portsmouth, if you have an issue, if you need a support, you can go to this help desk. You can get the necessary business advisory, you can get the business counseling. You can speak to your issues, you can identify your training and you can get a number of persons who can provide a support system for you. So we will be working to, with the town council, to improve this help desk for people in the north, in Portsmouth and environs. Now, apart from the work that we do at the Ministry of Commerce and to help micro, small and medium enterprises in Dominica. Because in fact, it is not lost on the government at all the importance of MSMEs in Dominica. Small businesses across sectors, whether it's in agriculture, tourism, retail shops, sewing, graphics, agro-processing and manufacturing. We are very aware that small businesses employ a high percentage of people in Dominica. Private government, public sector cannot absorb all employees in this land. And so, you, um, people in small business play a very critical role in the development of this country in terms of providing goods and services, in terms of generating income, in terms of moving, um, exports so that we get foreign exchange and in terms of creating employment for themselves and others. And so, the importance of small business, the importance of private sector is not lost at all on the government of Dominica. And that is why the government continues to put systems in place, facilities, um, supports in place for the development of private sector. So in addition to the work that we do at the, these grants, the technical advice, the training at the Ministry of Commerce, enterprise and small business, the government has also put in place a number of credit facilities that targets the private sector at the aid bank. So you have the 10 million dollars that was provided last year budget, um, targeting agriculture. And so that we can provide, we can expand in term of livestock, cultivation of crops, poultry to supply the abattoir. So 10 million dollars was provided and at a rate of 3% interest and as much as six months grace period. And from my last check, I think about seventy plus people had already accessed, um, this facility and to a tune of over 1 million dollars. The government also provided, um, 15 million dollars targeting hotels and restaurants and 1 million dollars targeting those in the music and creative industry. And this one is even as low as 2% interest. And following the budget, um, we expect a similar facility to be in place targeting manufacturers and agro-processors. We have a number and, um, Honorable Douglas and I, we speak all the time, that we have a number of small agro-processors. So we need to take, we have potential to, to expand in terms of agro-processing. And that is the intention of the ministry and the government to bring greater focus next year on manufacturing and agro-processing, providing tools, equipment, other resources for expansion of that sector. Um, further, the government in terms of private sector development, right around us, we have a number of hotels in development. We have the Range Development, the Kenpik Kinsey Hotel. That would always give me the trouble. Um, the Silver Beach Hotel that is coming up. And we also have the Morocco Hotel. And through this private sector development, we expect there to be linkages to new small businesses or for existing businesses to provide services to these hotels. And even during construction, in fact, there was, there were great benefits to businesses around Portsmouth and environs. And, um, I saw some people with their little mobile snackies also benefiting from the activities or from the development of these hotels. Um, so the governments, this government, this government led by a visionary Prime Minister is at the forefront, championing the cause of you the people, ensuring that we put things in place for overall development of this country and for private sector development included. And we should see as these hotels and this development comes through, we have greater sustainability, we have greater sustainable livelihoods and that each and every person can benefit from the ongoing development of this country. And this is something I am sure you are not ready to trade at all. And because while we do, we are pushing all our efforts towards the development of the private sector. We see that on the other side, the activities that they engage in are discouraging private sector development. Because when you try to, um, dirty the image of Dominica, when you try to bring down the citizenship by investment, which is enabling us to provide this development, you are really discouraging development in this country. And it means that you do not really care about us. All you care about is to enter into government. But then, it takes people to put you there. And I am sure, we the bright people of Dominica, we the intelligent people of Dominica, we see through them and we will not allow them to get into the doors of government because they are not interested in us, they do not care about us. All they care is about themselves. And so, I know you are focused, you are bright, we know what we are about. And you will stand behind a government who continues to ensure it addresses your social and economic concerns and it addresses issues or put things, mechanisms and systems in place to ensure that we can all be part of a development process that is going to benefit the entire economic landscape of this country. I thank you.
Thank you very much, Honorable Rosalind Paul. Right about now, at this juncture, we have come to a very important aspect of the meeting. Perhaps the reason why all of those tongues are held all over Dominica is for us to be able to hear from you one-on-one. What are your concerns? What are the issues that affect your life? So that we will continue to implement plans and policies that will reach the people, that will have a real positive impact on your development. So right about now, what we will do is, we'll open the floor for questions or comments or anything that you want to say. Make it short so that everybody can have an opportunity to make their point if they want to. And then we can in turn have an opportunity to try and address some of your concerns. If we do not have the immediate answers, we will assure you that we will take down every single thing that is said here so that in time, we are able to address all of the issues. A young lady from the Media Fraternity has a microphone. If you just raise your hands, she'll take it to you. Again, make your comments short so that everybody can have an opportunity to make their comment, to ask a question. I will now open the floor to your questions.
Good night, ladies and gentlemen, Pal Rep and Oliver. The last time I hold a bike, I get blows until I didn't have no clothes. But I'll hold it again because all my sins are the feet of Jesus. We Granville people, we are next in line for our blessing. The reason why I said so, some of the older folks know why this Labour Party rarely in government. I may look young, but I'm my age too. When you, I'll make it short, when Eugenia Charles first come on the scene, Pal Rep, for your information, your father did losing Portsmouth Central. And if Bumper hear in my voice, he'll know what I'm talking about. When he stood under by, by Olive, he say, your father say, eh be, moi perdi. Bumper say, no, I was right there, ballad Granville apacodesean. And when it did come down, it was only three people that vote freedom. And all in 500 and more was Jagan Villa. So if we have anything to get now, we rightly deserve it. It's our turn. My second concern, our people have to understand. When I start, I know I'll get blows, but I don't care. But right is right. Our people have to understand as Labour right. Eugenia Charles ruled for 15 years and nobody couldn't go to her. Rome didn't build in a day. Please wait all your turn. If all there were problem for you, Pal Rep, go in his office and talk to him. I just walk late at night, I just hear, you don't do what you do. And my brother, you don't, I'll tell it to your national media, please take your counseling from elderly people. Because who don't like you will never like you. And I telling you straight, you have some woodans that is eating your life. When you do see your house, it is finished. Good night, thank you very much. I still waiting.
Okay, I stand to make my contribution. Well, I have question, Ms. Daniel. Um, Ms. Daniel, you talks about the 70 years and over, like they getting 300 dollars a month. Now, if a elderly person have, let's say, six children... Now, if a elderly person have, let's say, six children and that six children is taking care of that elderly person, is she entitled to get that three hundred dollars? That is my question to you. Now to Mr. Douglas. You know, I, I, I don't know what really wrong with Granvillea people on a whole. But, Mr. Douglas, you talks about the packing shed, okay, which is a very good thing. But first of all, before I go further, I must say thank you for what you have done for me. Now you talk about the packing shed. Now, the packing shed is to bring agriculture down there to sell because you talk about market. But in the Granvillea area, there is no feeder road. You know, there is one in Picard, they call it Bal Blanca. They already do that road over four or five times and every time they do it, a liquor ring come, it cutting in two, nothing, no transport can go there. Now, I'm a farmer, I do poultry, you know, I bring down eggs every day. Now, when I bring down the eggs, before I reach home, over three, four thousand eggs break because I have to carry it on my head, no transport to bring it down. Now, there is another place, they call the Moncton. Look, they just start a road there. My brother, he don't even have a good two weeks if you pass there right now, the road cut, a liquor ring that just passed. I feel the people who doing the work on that road, you know, they should have a mind that when they do the road, you know, put rain before anything, entourage the road as they going up. But the, the, the people, the people reach up at least almost a half a mile and no tarage, I can't go there with the transport. If rain falling is problem, I have to carry everything on my head. Please, Mr. Drago should be there but he is not there because he is the Minister of Agriculture. But you are there, so I am calling on you, you know, to do something for us, the farmers, you know, because, you know, watch my age and I've been carrying load on my head all that time. Yeah, do something for us on those road, pitch the road, do something so our life could be better, so we could bring, you know, the thing to the pack house. No, so that is my question and my comments to you, Mr. Douglas.
Good evening to everybody. Thanks for the First Lady, thanks for everybody. My comment that I have to say, one thing I have to say, thank very much for the Portsmouth Tongue Conquer. For you know, wonderful job up there. You see up there, the pain of my heart come out, it was at this grace. When people come from, just what the condition of Granvillea. Thanks for the person who do it, thanks for Tongue Conquer, thank you. Before thank you, everybody thank, that, that's my comment, nothing more to say. Somebody look, thank Mr. Austrie. We have a problem with the land project, Mr. Austrie will tell us about the land, you tell us, but you tell us more, look.
Good evening to all. I have two concerns and I would like to bring it out this afternoon. First of all, I want to thank the, the Ministry of Housing for selling me a piece of land in the Chance area. I remember some years ago, I was courting in that area and I had a smaller house down in Zikak. And when the opportunity came for me to buy that piece of land or to ask, to sell me that piece of land, I went to Mr. Reginald Austrie in Roseau, so while now probably cannot remember that. And when they were ready, I was one of the first person whom they sent a letter to and tell me that they were going to sell me the land. And I went to the credit union to get the loan because I did not have the money at the time to pay the government and then I paid the credit union. And I want to thank Mr. Austrie for publicly for selling me this piece of land. My concern is at the back of the, the sad land where I built, there is a drain passing, well, it don't really have a drain, but there is a drain in the extreme end of the, of Chance, way up in the end, coming from the cemetery, coming down. And all the water on the both side, when rainfall comes through that avenue, pass on the culvert. And then when it reach close to my place, there is so flat, so most of the water come right through my yard, almost under the house. And so I would like to see if the government or whoever in charge could make a drain, probably center back one, make a drain to join with the river. So all the water that is coming from the top of Zikak, when it reach there, it will have access to the river because, because it have no drain when it reach, it just spread and come way underneath the house. Secondly, at the front of the house, there is that road, that nice paved road, and it goes down to the end of the river by Cobra House Bridge. But when the road reach there, it's about twenty or thirty feet from the road, the river passes there. There was a time you could drive and go on the road, but it appears that the person who owns the property there, they bar with that section, so probably that section belongs to them, I do not know. So probably if the government or the authority can look into that, that they can make a small bridge and just join it to the Cobra House Bridge. So when the transport is coming from the countryside, especially if it's an emergency to go to hospital, instead of they pass right down, they can just pass through that nice road and go up to the hospital because now I notice the, the entire Chance has better road than Portsmouth now. And we should give the, the government a hand for that. Because from the time of us a small boy, I know, most of the road in Zikak is just road, but it's not street, it's just road. In other words, they were not, most of them were so rough that you have to actually take your time to pass there. But now, I would, I don't want to say it's on streets of gold. But this road, we must applaud the work that has been done in the, in the Zikak area. I have to give them a good hand clap. So I want to say thank you and I wish that they will look into that little concern and just do that. And I think that Zikak will be a paradise. Thank you very much, Mr. Austrie.
Okay, my concern is about the park. I realize they don't really court it on a consistent basis. Like if you watch it now, half of it caught. And then when they do the other half, half grow up. So I would like them to do it, like if it's a monthly thing and always keep it to a best level. And also I'd be very happy if one day it will have lights. Thank you.
Good evening to the head table and everybody. I want to say thank you to the Dominica Labour Party for the small business grant that they have been giving people. I want to say that many of us don't understand what the government is really doing, but what I get to understand by attending this small business, what they did first, they were teaching us how to handle the monies that they will be giving us, is that the government is trying to eradicate begging like the eradicated pit toilet. And because people doesn't understand that they take it for granted, but we should not take it for granted, they're trying to help us to better ourselves. And as some people can even employ other people, we should be grateful that when they give us the money, we do what we are supposed to do with it and not what we are not supposed to do. Because some people really waste it and they say, "Oh, government giving money." I know government not just giving money, government is helping people to become better people. And when you understand that, you will learn how to handle the money. I want to thank my parrep, he didn't even know my name, but he come and asked me my name. Thank you, Mr. Douglas. And we are looking for greater things from the government of Dominica. Amen.
Thank you very much. I just want to answer a few questions. You see, it's a bad thing when you know a person by their nickname. And somehow, I kind of deduced your name by your surname. I said, "It has to be you." So that is why I was able to reach out to you. But it's a good thing and I think the point you, you making is a very valid point, that when people are given the small business assistance, use it to grow your business. And, and, and when we, when we see the success stories from the grants that we have given, we can give more because you are also making us successful. So I want to thank you. But I just want to address a few things that came up. One, the Gis Park, I have just put somebody permanently under the NEP and that person will be absolutely responsible for the park. That's why you have seen that half of the park is cut and tomorrow he will continue. I mean, everybody knows Mano. And Mano is the person, right, yeah. Mano has been in a good job. So I have placed Mano permanently under the NEP. His only, his only responsibility is the Gis Park. He don't have to go around with the rest of the crew, he just have to take care of the park. So that'll be taken care. And, and rest assured that lights are on the cards for the park. Just give us some time, we'll do things one at a time, but we have a nice system now that I see that we've been doing with, with parks around and with the solar lights. So I think that is something that we can do also in Gis Park in Granvillea. So we will consider that and, and we will light up it. And also too, I am speaking to some people from outside of Dominica to see if we can get a lot more, the one like we have in Portsmouth where you can sit and just mow the park. So that is something that we're also looking at. With respect to the feeder roads, we are doing the feeder roads and it's our hope that all, we can do all feeder roads in Dominica. We've gotten some help from the EU, from the European Union, and we have done some feeder roads under that. We have also used some monies from a program under the constituency empowerment. Each parrep gets a grant from the Prime Minister to do whatever he wants to do in his constituency. And so under that same facility, I have done the Brandy Road, the Brandy Feeder Road, then we coming down, I want to do the Mountain Feeder Road, then I want to address all of the feeder roads in the Granvillea Picard area. So rest assured that the feeder roads will be done. There is a few landslides on one of the feeder roads in the Hot Spring area that will also be addressed, that was brought up to my attention. And I will also address that. I believe that these, the issues that came up so far, if you have any other questions or comments. About, oh, and, and somebody was asking if a person who is seventy and older have six children, if they are also entitled to the grant? And I think I can answer that and, and say yes. As long as you are seventy and plus, seventy and over, and you are not receiving any assistance from the social security or you're not receiving a pension from Dominica or outside of Dominica, if you have no assistance receiving whatsoever and you apply, you are in fact entitled and you are citizen of Dominica, you are entitled to the seventy and over non-pension grant.
I want to thank, I want to thank the Labour Party for doing such a good work. And I want to thank Honorable Prime Minister Roosevelt Skerritt for really considering the poor people and the ageable people. And I can say, I want to thank everybody that everybody come together, that really consider the, the needy. And to tell you the plain truth, that every time I put up my head, I say, "Well, this is scary roof." And I want to thank him. I want to thank him for that. And I don't want anybody to come inside and stamp their foot too hard because you're smashing up scary house. So I want to thank the Labour Party for that. And a concern I have about our village, our drainage, mister, we need already, we need some drainage in, in, in the village. Because I can tell you, whenever the rain falls, the road filled with water and then you know already, there is a, a, the drain facing crystal, system, crystalline wall this side, Mr. Douglas. It is unbelievable to see it how it is. And one facing my area from Mr. Christian to the other side, all that's blocked. And then we really need some proper drainage in the village. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to start with making one or two little comments and then I have two permanent questions. First of all, I would like to congratulate the Dominica Labour Party for the kind of job it is doing around the island. I really appreciate the, the kind of work it doing all over the place. I am not an old person, I'm not a young person either, but I can say that to date, Dominica Labour Party has the best team of young people, elderly people well mixed up, as far as I've seen. I've seen the Freedom Party, I've seen the Workers' Party, and to me the Freedom, the Dominica Labour Party today has the best working team ever. I also would like to say, I also would like to say that Granvillea, Portsmouth, it is the bedrock of the Dominica Labour Party. This is, this is one constituency that has never been shortchanged. I heard my parrep say, Penville, I heard him talk about Biosh. I can remember Freedom Party won in Vekas, that's, that's Vekas constituency. Colliho was a Freedom Party stronghold. Even Granby that had been so strong, have already turned Freedom and back to Labour. But Portsmouth has never changed. And today, Portsmouth in general, because it is a constituency, Portsmouth has never changed. And today, today, seeing that Portsmouth is the strongest part of the Labour Party, I figure PM Skerritt should be here. He should be here. Because you see that little girl I have here? He is, he's a godfather. And she came and she says, "I want to see my power, I want to talk to him." I just don't know what she want to say to him. Okay? Now, the other thing I would like to say is that Granvillea, Granvillea need proper drainage. Granvillea is an area that is waterlogged. I will emphasize that Granvillea is waterlogged and we need proper drainage in Granvillea. Especially around the park, there is no drainage around the park. There's a main drain that passes between Granvillea, let's say, in the area of the SDA school. That drain used to serve as a boundary between Geese Industries and Forest Company. This drain is like a canal and that drain has never been addressed at any given time. That is one of the things I would like to see and most of the other drains around Granvillea. I live in an area just on the side there and there is no drain. My water is going between myself and CIC and it rolls down, all the way down. And there are some people living lower down, they blocking the water, the one water passing the yard. And the water can't go uphill, it has to go down. You understand? So this is one of the things I would like to see. Now, on the other hand, I have a question. My question is, when that road, that coastal road was cut in nineteen seventy-three, the road was supposed to pass straight from Mackenzie area to go straight onto the one-mile road. And because of some people in Portsmouth that had certain business interests, they prevented the road, they boycotted the road and the road is, the road has to pass through the village and go through Portsmouth. That is why today we have that bottleneck at Borough Square every morning. Most time when I take my children to school, I have to be ironing left because when I reach Borough Square, I cannot pass, I have to stop fifteen minutes, twenty minutes because of the overflow of traffic. Sometimes you have some big trucks that go into Wesley, Mary, God, Calibishy to supply with a few wheel of materials and they have to pass through the town. That is not necessary. We need the road. You will pass through Portsmouth if you need to pass there, but we need that access. The other thing we need is the Indian River. The Indian River is a threat to Portsmouth and Granvillea. When I was a boy, the Labour Party, the Honorable Earl Leslie, I can remember, most, most of you can remember him, Earl Leslie, a blessed memory, because it's like he's forgotten somewhere, his name... Because it's like he's forgotten somewhere, his name is buried somewhere. Okay? But he served this constituency for 20 years before Mike Douglas came in, and served three or whatever it is. Okay? Now, the Indian River used to be dredged often. We used to stay on the Indian River Bridge and dive below in the river. That's to show you how deep it was. All boats during the hurricane season used to go and shelter in the Indian River because of the depth of it. Today, you cannot do that. When rainfall, it is a challenge for the fishermen and their boats in there. Some time ago during, Erika, yes, couple fishermen lost their boat in the river because the river is doing things that people have never seen before. So we need to know, the question I would like to ask is if there is any plan to dredge that river and to rebuild the groynes that were built to protect the mouth of the river by the Labour Party, the very same Labour Party. We want to know if you have any plans to do that. And if you have any plans as well to put that road through that area before too many buildings and houses go there, and you cannot get anywhere to pass the road. Thank you.
Good evening to the head table. I came a little late. I really wanted to attend to that meeting, but I was in another meeting, and I'm so glad I am here tonight. I have a comment and maybe a question at the same time. I'm not sure if you all talk about that project in Georgetown, Promiseville. I'm a little concerned about Promiseville. One of my concerns is, I know that you all are planning to divide the land, sell the land or whatever. But I am living in Georgetown from 1985, so I've been there for quite a while. And I know when Geese was trying to give us a piece of land, myself and my husband, they could, we asked for there, and they said they could not give us a piece of land there because it was for the extension of Granvillea. So they gave us where we are in Georgetown. My concern is, by sharing, I'm giving people lots. I foresee that place is going to be like a ghetto, a slum. I might be wrong. I might be very, very wrong. But everybody's going to build a little shack, a little plywood house. And this place is next to the medical school. I heard the young Mr. Fink said a while ago that Labour Party has been, I mean, reigning in Granvillea from maybe the day I was born. You could not tell my mother nothing about Labour Party. I was just giving them a joke a while ago. Everybody knows my mother. Mike had a T-shirt that had, "Mike like Mike", and my mother had a T-shirt that I like Mike, and we used to trouble her, saying, you know. And this lady had every minister, wealth and frame. In her house lies their picture. My point, going back to Promiseville, is, on the plan for Promiseville, I would really appreciate that the government go deep down and start to make a good housing scheme for Georgetown. I believe we deserve better in Granvillea. I will say it with a force. After voting the Labour Party for all those years, we do not need ghettos in Granvillea. We need good housing scheme. I'm glad that you all gave Baffet State a nice place, people a nice place. Oh, I'm thankful for that, not because it's not us that get it, but I believe we need better. And let me tell you, I am old. The old people are not there for so long. While we may say Labour Party is strong in Portsmouth, don't fool yourself. There is a young generation that is raising. You might fool yourself. Do not fool yourself. The elderly people is dying, and the young generation is coming along. You might be swept off your feet in Portsmouth. Remember, remember I said that. Please, we do not want a ghetto. I do not want you all to come, I don't want to criticize, it's not criticizing young people. But you know, some people kind of say, "We don't want that in Georgetown." I want the housing people to do something proper. That is number one. I have another concern. I have another concern. And my concern is, I want to put it good, you know, because I don't want to put anybody into any bad light. If I come, let's say I have a problem with the Minister of Agriculture. I just joined a reference, get me good, eh? I have a problem in the agricultural area, and I would go to the Minister of Agriculture. But he's not my par rep. But I know my problem is with the Minister of Agriculture. So here it is, I see him. Should the Minister of Agriculture send me to my par rep? I didn't come and ask him for assistance. I came to him because I have a problem. And here it is, you sending me to my par rep. If you send me to my par rep, to me, in my own little knowledge, I know my par rep must come to you, and it is not good. Because here it is, you make me believe I will go to my par rep, but I know my par rep has to come to you. You're making me believe my par rep not working for me or go to your par rep. I would really appreciate our ministers to do better, do better than that. Because you giving, that's why I tell them, the reason why they want the people after Skerritt is because some of the ministers is not doing what they're supposed to do. But if all the ministers were doing what they're supposed to do, you all would be a force to be reckoned with. And that is my contribution, but my main contribution, do not forget Georgetown. We do not want little houses. We want a proper housing scheme in Georgetown because all will have murder on all your hands. Watch me and read my lips. I live in Georgetown.
A pleasant good evening to everyone. I want to tell Mrs. Aubrey that she has said things that are absolutely true. And I want to continue on the same vein. Portsmouth or Granvillea, rather, being the potato garden of the Labour Party, I think Granvillea need to be taken care of. There is a white elephant at the back of the Port complex or the Promises. That is the Fish Tech area. And I've been thinking, I know from this town hall meeting, I suppose it is going to be like every other town hall meeting where government is going to give assistance to the people of the area. My concern is, lots of those small businesses that have been helped in the other areas, I am not sure how productive these small businesses have been. But again, endorsing what the last speaker said, I would like to raise a concern and see to it that something different is done in the Granvillea area. Mangos did not bear very much this year. Yet, when you go around the island, you find mango turning pig food. I am wondering how much it would take. Instead of donating maybe a 300,000, a 200,000 to this individual and this other individual, the people who may be targeted for assistance, why not use that money and open a cannon factory and make them part owner of the cannon factory? Now, this would help much further than you think because, number one, they are part owners, they have interest in it. Then they would work in that same place in order to keep their business afloat. So I think, if we look at what is happening now, we get all kinds of water juices from everywhere. I mean, glow up, we call them. But we have the real fruit in this country. If you go to Barberos, you find Barberos would produce grapefruit juice. They do not have a grapefruit tree. They produce all kinds of fruits that they don't have trees, artificial flavors that they use. But we have the real thing down here. Why not make these people part owner instead of giving them to open a little hollow here, a little hollow there, so that they can open, now we can have a cannon factory to complete, in order to maintain the potato garden? Because I will tell you, the potato fields are not being potato anymore. You might be seeing the vine, but no potatoes. So I'm asking, and my concern is this, instead of doing the little thing that you are doing, a few dollars here, a few dollars there, target certain people, form a corporation, and then develop a cannon factory so that they can find work to do and that they will stop relying on government as much as they have been doing. I thank you. Hello, yeah. Let me see if I can address some of the concerns that were raised. The road by Macklin Mary across to One Mile is on the cards to be done. That is a plan that we've had. When we did the Portsmouth development plan, that road is in fact on the cards to be done. It's not a priority, but it is in fact something that we have been looking at. Indian River, we have the designs for the rehabilitation of the groin of the Indian River. Those designs are with an engineer right now. Those designs have to be costed. The prime minister, when we had the Lago meeting, the prime minister actually asked me about the Indian River. I got the designs, I had them in my archives, and we gave them to an engineer to put the costing on them so that we could rehabilitate the groin of the Indian River. Promiseville, the Promiseville roads are being done as we speak. And if you remember, when we had the Promiseville issue, we specifically asked that nobody go on the Promiseville land to establish any housing. The Minister of Housing is here, and I have spoken about it tonight, that we intend to do apartment buildings like what we did in Emzol and Baffet State on the Promiseville land because we do not have enough lots. We have about 65 to 70 lots, and we cannot satisfy the 500 applicants that we have with 65. That is why we want to do some nice apartment buildings, free and four-bedroom apartments, so that everybody can have a chance to own an apartment like our house. We can go up because we do not have enough space to go across. That will answer your question, and certainly you have spoken what we have been saying. From the very first day we had the Promiseville meetings here, we have always said that we do not want Promiseville to develop into a slum. We, the government, will put in the housing, we'll put in the infrastructure. Dock right now is doing a 600,000 infrastructure development project in Promiseville. As we speak, I don't know when last year I went to Promiseville, but roads and drains and streets are being done in Promiseville right now by a contractor from Granvillea because we want to do the Promiseville development properly. Okay? Secondly, to address the issue of a cannon factory. It has, there are numerous feasibility studies that have been done on a cannon factory. And the nature of the availability of fruits in Dominica, it is seasonal. Even right now, we having problem with finding dashing, you know that, because Dominican farmers produce seasonally. So in November, October, December, you will get all the dashing in the world you want. Two weeks ago, myself and Shem went round Dominica looking for dashing. And even as we have Haitians producing dashing here, we still cannot get the dashing because everybody planting in seasons. We have to get out of the seasonality. So when everybody talking about cannon factory, cannon factory, during mango season, you have mango making dog on road. But when the season is over, you do not have the supply of mangoes to sustain a cannon factory. Okay? So what you have to do is, you have to use the small little businesses, everybody who want to do their thing. So some people will produce cocoa sticks, some people will produce coffee, some people will produce ginger tea, some people will produce like how all the small people are doing. And the packhouse have started to pulp passion fruit. They taking the passion fruit out of the passion fruit. They blending it and they freezing it so that you can go home with a passion fruit pack to make your juice, and we intend to export that. We also taking dashing, and they peeling the dashing. Look snowy, there's snowy walking in the packhouse. They peeling the dashing, and they freezing the dashing, and they have dashing packs. So that you can buy a dashing pack and go home and make a broth immediately. So we are trying to get into the whole cannon factory thing you're talking about. But we do not have the production at the level at which we can have those fruits every year, every month from the year. So for example, for example, if you want to have a cannon, if you want to have a cannon factory, and you want to make orange juice from Dominica, but when orange of in season, the factory have to close down because you do not have the volume of, no, if no, then you'll have to import the orange pulp from abroad to keep the factory going. So what we have to do is, we have to beef up our production or do small, medium-sized enterprises, everybody. So you have a little Toloma going on in Laplane. You have a little Farin going on in Petit Soufriere. You have a little Ginger going on in Vekas. These are the things, cottage industries. So that, and we in Dominica, we have to start to eat what we produce. You're talking about cannon factory. But look, we have the abattoir there, and people still go in and shop and buy Bacchanic instead of buying the local chicken and the local eggs. Look, you have, look, you have an egg producer here. How many people not buying your eggs, but they will go buy the supermarkets and buy the foreign egg? So we have to start to eat what we grow if we want to have production. Okay, so we will take, we'll take five more questions or comments before we close up. Good night to the head table.
Hello. I want to just add or respond to a concern you see. If you, sometimes we just say things without having the real information. We, I was happy, Honourable Douglas spoke of the cannon factory, and I'll tell you of an experience. Before I was in the government, I would do business proposals for people. Now, one family came to me, they wanted to do a cannon factory. And they needed, they had to pay me to do this proposal. But I sent them to do the research, to do the survey, to do all of what they needed to invest to make a planning factory successful. All of the challenges, just to do a cost-benefit analysis with them. When they came back, they tell us we're going to squash the idea of a planning factory because they realize that it was not going to worth it. What we will be trying to do at the Ministry of Commerce is to get small groups or small cottage size, help them, help them to get into agro-processing. And you'll be surprised, there are a number of products. The small people that you think will help giving money, there are a number of success story. Right in Portsmouth, you may not know that people produce soap. Young people, 20-something year old, they produce soap. We have a young man of 20-something exporting cocoa. You will see it in the supermarket, and you'll not realize that it's Dominican's producing this. Just on Friday, I pick up something, they said it's local cocoa type. And when I looked, it was produced well packaged, nicely packaged, produced in Wesley. We have a number of small agro-processors in Dominica. What we need to do is bring them together, help them, boost them, help them to increase their volume, help them to improve their quality, and to have them expand. But never think that the small people we are helping... But never think that the small people we are helping, most of it, more than eighty percent of these people, they use the money for what it is intended, most of them. So please do not think. And if we do not provide for these people to have a livelihood, what are you sending them to do?
Okay, we'll take five more before we close.
Good night to the head table and to Mr. Douglas. I'd like to tell, I'd like to ask Mr. Douglas one question. See, seeing that I'm a, I'm a worker of the Portsmouth Town Council and it's a shame, it's a shame for a man, a, a young man to be taking home three hundred dollars every fortnight and he cannot send, I cannot send my child to a proper college to, to look above me when I get old. I would like to tell, I would like to ask Mr. Douglas, can I take home, can I build a house with three hundred dollars in this modern age? And I would like the government to look into helping the people that is cleaning the drain. It's a shame and I feel it is time for, for me as a young man to retire from the drain and go on my own business.
Good evening to my ministers and to my government. I want to say in a special way, I want to thank every single one of you. I think as the opportunity is given to me, there are many people who are so ungrateful and sometimes even if we don't get something, but let us not be ungrateful. I am a born and bred labourite, that is why and I can stand here proudly. Even when we had the, even though we had the Promiseville situation and I myself was one of those saying no land, no vote, that doesn't mean anything. We were just fighting for our cause and tonight, as I stand here and I listen to all of you as you say that, you know, you are going to do the housing scheme, I'm so thankful. There are so many things I am thankful for, okay? Honorable Rosalind Paul, I want to say in a special way, from since two thousand and fourteen, I have been attending the, the thing, the, the training programs that you normally have for the Ministry of Commerce. And I want to say in a special way, for many of those who were not there, I think you missed on a lifetime. Because I am one of the testing mo nails that words cannot express. If there's any other word more than excellent, the program was that kind of a thing. And to me, as one of those who put before hand agro processing and agriculture, don't underestimate, we might look little, we might look poor, we might look whatever you want to say to us, but I am one of those that come a few years from now, you're going to see manufacturing. You see these fruits we have wasting here? I have a secret recipe that I just cannot say so much, but when it will be exploded, we will be surprised to know what we can do with these fruits. Honorable Paul, there's just one thing, when I send for some of those equipments before the year end, I have already have on my list some equipments that I want to do manufacturing. Please, when we come to you, my pal rep, when we come to you, please, we're not telling you to help us with everything. All we are saying to just give us a listening ear, that's just what we want. So we, we can talk and you can say, okay, this is the way we can help you or if we cannot help you, this is the way. I just want to say tonight that when we come to you, we are not really coming to you because we want to frustrate you, but we coming to you because we have a concern. And in a special way, my dear darling Paul, I just want to say to you that, you know, you do so much for the Ministry of Enterprise because that is where, you know, that is my goal, the Ministry of Enterprise. And there's another thing that I just want to say. Some of us, we don't understand and we underestimate the power of the government. And when we see things happen and they are good, say they are good. People make mistakes, the ministers make mistakes. I know sometimes, I have two pal reps, Honorable Douglas and Honorable Austria. You make mistakes sometimes that I don't like, I could use the word to get me so pissed off, but then at the end of the day, when we look at it all, even, you know, we all human, we make those mistakes, but it's when you can see the mistake that you make and you can come back and say to the people, okay, I have recognized this, I have recognized that and together, not only the pal reps, not only the government do it on their own, but together with the citizens, we can help the government to achieve the goals and the plans that they have for, so that we can have a better Dominica. And tonight I can say to us, let us all cooperate because Dominica doesn't belong to the government. Dominica belong to every one of us. So when you see someone trying to achieve, don't say things about the individuals, don't say things about the pal rep, don't say too many things, but just let us all be thankful for what is being done for our country.
Hi. Good evening to all the cabinet in the house, Mr. Rosalind Paul, Mr. Kelvadaru, who my very own, my buddy and Mr. Daniel. Good evening. Well, this young lady touched on all my point, but I have some, but first of all, I just want to thank, you know, my parents, they were born labourite, so then it's like the legacy has to continue. Sister Hilton, don't laugh, you see already. So, I don't know, whenever they see me with friend, they say, oh, that is labour power. I said, that's also the blood of Jesus. Okay, to represent both. No, what I want to say is that, in the past, you couldn't go to any other. I could go to my dear darling Roosevelt, Honorable Roosevelt's carried. I could come to you, Mr. Douglas, Mr. Kelvadar, Miss Rosalind Paul and also my dear friend. No interaction, we could not go to these people. So we see the avenue is open, so we have to thank God very much for that. We could not go to these people now, it, God had made it so easier so that we can go. Now we say now, these people come, they did not come on their own government, did not come on the, God used the people to put them there. The Bible says that pray for government, pray for prince, pray for king. If we cry out on them, God is not pleased, all right? So we have to pray for them, we have to uplift them in prayer because not praying for them, that is a sin, all right? And we have to thank God for the Dominica Labour Party. That potato garden, I myself will die labour, I was born a labourite, I will die a labourite. And that's just Laurel, that's just me, that's just me. Now, I have a concern, but I have another point, I'll share it after. One of, I have three things and I think I brought Mr. Douglas in my, I say, Mr. Douglas, here it is, I bring everything before you and I want you to know. What is my cry, what is my plea, what is my, I went to college, two thousand and, two thousand and two, something like that, no, fourteen, I graduated, I went to Christian Community College in the field of counseling, I graduated bachelor, I showed Mr. Douglas and I'm just, I was so frustrated, I said, Lord, here it is, I bring him before you. If I cannot get a job, I will have to migrate or I will have to go into my own little city. Mr. Rosalind Paul, you know, I want to thank you all very much. I thanked my P S, I thanked the others, thank you all very much. Mr. Douglas, I thank you. You know, you already get, and all the others, thank you very much. Nothing, I mean, I got some of the things, but I need to see that house come because most of my things are damaging from the rental, the greenhouse is not there, all right? So I have to start somewhere, even if I have the education, I'm in the papers, he said, but I am a human of the soil, our parents trained us in the soil, even if I have the education and some, but I know, I want to go into that, this is my field. People say, boy, when I see you do, I admire because I love it. I don't want to be working in something that I am not passionate about, I'm very passionate about what I am doing, I take pride. Anytime you working in something and you do not, I don't want to be working for the money and I don't, you know, and to make sure that I'm very prideful about what I'm doing. So thank you all very much. And one of the other thing I want to say about the, I heard you mentioned that the money in the aid bank, what are the requirements to go to the aid bank? Because you said that they are funded in the aid bank, so me as a farmer, if I need to go to the aid bank, what are the requirements? Thank you.
Bonsoir. Good evening, gentlemen, friends, enemies, if there are any, I hope not many, ministers, medias, friends and everyone. First I would say it was surprising to be invited here tonight, I did not know about that, I was just passing through and I saw...